All right, let me go ahead and get started. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. Let's start with the one in the center. At present, we do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Notice that this special meeting of the Pittman Board of Education was advertised in the South Jersey Times, posted at Borough Hall, a copy letter delivered to all Pittman schools to be posted, and posted on the district's website. Further notice was posted and filed as required by law stating that the board would meet for a special meeting in public session at 7:00 PM in the Pittman High School Media Center. I shall entertain any objections with supporting reasons to the conduct of this meeting on the grounds that it violates the Open Public Meetings Act. All right, enough, we will proceed with business, and that is the interviews for the open seat on the Board of Education.
Thank you, everybody, for coming this evening. As I think most people are aware, Mrs. Knickie has decided to resign her Board of Education seat. She had her choosing year two of a three-year term set to expire at the end of 2022. So as a result, we are here tonight to interview candidates, as is required by law, at a public meeting. The person who, we have six candidates, and it requires a vote of the majority of the remaining board members. So there are six members left, I believe everyone is here tonight. So four people will need to vote in order for there to be a valid vote for a new board member. So the way we are conducting this is we are doing a public interview process. We are requesting, if you are here, we are asking the same questions of every candidate. So if you have yet to interview, we are requesting that you wait outside for the other interviews. But after yours is done, you can stay for the duration of the interviews. So following the completion of the six interviews, it is the Board of Education's intention to go into executive session for the purposes of deliberations. Once that is done, and if there is a consensus, we would come back out and do a public vote. Again, the magic number is four, for there to be an appointment to the vacant board seat. This seat would run, the appointed person would stay on the board for the 2021 year, and there would be an unexpired election for the last year of Mrs. Knickie's term for 2022 that will be held on the November ballot. So again, we are only appointing to fill the remainder of this year. So if there's any questions from the board, or anybody here, we can get started.
Do we have everybody here?
Well, remember, we staggered the time.
Oh, okay.
We staggered the time. So I believe, was it a random draw, Mrs. Basiltham?
It was in the order what we received.
Received, okay. So first, we have Jennifer Martin, and are you here? Hi, how are you? The hot seat we have up there, and again, if you are here for interviewing, we would ask that you step outside and we will come get you when it is your turn to interview. Thank you very much.
Jennifer Martin, good evening.
So you guys, everything has to process, you have your questions in the packet, and then you also have a copy of a sheet like this that you can make rounds with each candidate. If you want to fill in those, or anything like that, you want to be there. You won't have to, but put it on.
All right, so Mr. Wehara, so you will be conducting the interviews yourself.
Yes.
You'll be the only one speaking on behalf of the board. So that I will turn the meeting back over to you.
Jennifer, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, for purposes of confirming your eligibility to serve on the Board of Education, we must ask the following questions. Number one, are you a citizen of the United States and have you been a resident of the district for at least one year preceding this appointment?
Yes, I've lived in Pittman for 13 years.
Are you able to read and write?
Yes.
Are you registered to vote in the district?
Yes, I am.
Have you ever been convicted of any crime which may disqualify you from serving as a member of the board?
No.
Do you currently hold any elected positions?
No.
All right, so let's start with the meat now. Why do you want to be a member of the Board of Education?
Oh, good question, jumping in. You know, it's a tough one, I have to say, when I heard that there was six candidates pulled together, I was like, oh, wow, like, go Pittman, because this is a tough position to serve on a board. So I'm really proud to hear that there's so much interest in town. So I'm happy for the town, and I hope you guys pick the best candidate. I've served on boards, not a Board of Education, but I've served on two boards for literacy volunteers in the state, and one board in Burlington County, I'd served as the president for two and a half years, and that was during a time that we were going through a merger with other affiliates. So it was quite a lot of work. So I know in a volunteer position, board membership can be a lot of work. So I think I wanted to serve because with my background in education, my interest in education, I know it's something that I would be, I would be good at, and I could do, and I know what I'm getting myself into as far as the work goes.
Next question, what do you think is the role of a school board member?
I can say I'm not coming in with any sort of agenda or feelings of grandeur, like, oh, I'm gonna make a whole bunch of changes. I think the role is really to have really open eyes, good ears, and to be supportive of the district.
What personal qualities do you possess that you feel will make you an effective school board member?
I think my background in education is probably the best quality that I bring to this. So I've been in higher ed for 14 years, been at Salem Community College for nearly 10 years, and an associate professor of English there, served on a lot of committees. It's a small school where I get to kind of get my hand in a lot of things. Since it's a community college, the students that I work with mainly are students who are fresh out of high school, some of which are actually still in high school, and then making the transition to a four-year school. So just having that connection with students who are making the transition from college, or I'm sorry, from high school to college, I think helps me have a real awareness of student needs, especially beyond high school. And then also too, I'd say the other big quality is, I've had three children in the district from preschool on, and I love this district. So we started at Memorial, I have one in middle school right now, and then two here at the high school. We have one of the best teachers in the entire district sitting back there. I absolutely love our teachers, and I just, I think that coming from the field of education and then also having children in the district and being appreciative of all that our teachers put in, I think helps.
What life or work experiences do you have that would make you a good school board member?
Back to work and then also volunteer work that I do too, having served on boards before, and understanding the role of a board in a leadership position, but at the same time in a supportive position for how the operations need to happen in order to run a successful, large organization like a school district.
Are you aware of the extensive time commitments involved in serving on the Board of Education, including outside of attending the board meetings, and are you willing to meet these commitments?
Yes, and I hope you have some other good candidates too. I am aware of that, I'm very busy, and I stepped up to this, I will say, a little bit hesitantly when I saw that this was open. Being on the board here in the district is something I've always wanted to do. I'm not sure when, and maybe this isn't my time, maybe it'll be another time. I will say the time commitment does scare me a little bit, but I am aware of it. I never come to anything unprepared, so I'm somebody who always read everything I need to do ahead of time, serve on, you know, committees within the board to the best of my ability, and always give my, you know, my whole self.
Are you familiar with the School Board Code of Ethics, and how do you intend to ensure that you follow them at all times while serving as a board member?
I am, I don't know, I, like, I guess I know the Code of Ethics more of kind of a 10,000-foot range rather than like actually know any specific policies. But I imagine that there's quite a lot of sensitive information that has to be kept to myself and only discussed within, you know, the work that I would do on the board. So I imagine that privacy and keeping sensitive information under wraps is most important.
What issues do you foresee as the most important for the board over the next year?
Oh, COVID, number one, number two, and number three. This is not easy for anybody. Dr. MacLare, I give you a lot of credit, I think this has been, you're doing a great job with everything, but this has got to be the most, you never expected this in your career, I'm sure. So COVID, COVID, COVID. Scheduling, supporting teachers, making sure the children are safe, making sure the teachers are safe, like, I mean, it's never-ending.
If you are chosen by the board, you will be appointed to a vacated board position that expires at the end of 2021. Would you be interested in running for an elected seat on the board at that time?
I would say so at this time, yes.
And finally, is there any other information you would like to share with us today about your candidacy?
I think I got everything out. You know my work history, again, I just love this town. This school is definitely the epicenter of this town. And so anything I can do to be supportive, I'm one of those people, I believe, you know, many hands make for light work, and don't complain about the problems, be part of the solution. So just, I just want to be a helper, but I know I'm not coming in here with any, you know, firm opinions or thoughts that I'm going to, you know, make any, you know, Jen Martin changes. Like, I know that's not this role.
All right, that's all the questions I have. So thank you.
Thank you.
No, feel free to sit around.
Oh, that's right, yeah, you sit around.
Sit around. So Christopher Simons is next, it is 7:15, so if you're, I know somebody is here for that. If they want to, Rob, are you okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Keep it going?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Hello.
For purposes of confirming your eligibility to serve on the Board of Education, we must ask you the following questions. Number one, are you a citizen of the United States and have you been a resident of the district for at least one year preceding this appointment?
Yes.
Are you able to read and write?
Yes.
Are you registered to vote in the district?
Yes, I am.
Have you ever been convicted of any crime which may disqualify you from serving as a member of the board?
No.
Do you currently hold any elected positions?
No.
All right, let's move on to the substantive questions now. Why do you want to be a member of the Board of Education?
Okay, so I've had two daughters who have almost, my older daughter graduated last year, and my younger daughter will be graduating in just over a year. And the Pittman School District has been important to me, but it's something I'm very worried about. The enrollment for the district has been declining pretty much ever since my oldest daughter started in the kindergarten, and it sort of seems to be declining without end at this point. The district has some troubles with the state funding. So we've been having state cuts year after year, and we're scheduled to continue to get such cuts. These things are hurting the district. When they lay off faculty members, when they cut programs, it's making it not as, not as robust, it's not giving as much opportunity for the students of Pittman. And then the pandemic cannot have helped it. It's been an additional stress.
What do you think is the role of a school board member?
I think the role of a school board member is to oversee the district. It isn't to make the day-to-day decisions, what classes to offer, or anything like that. It's to sort of try to get it on, ensure that the district is on a good direction.
What personal qualities do you possess that you feel will make you an effective school board member?
Okay, so I'm a professor at Rowan University, a math professor, and for the past nine years, I've been chairing the Rowan University Budget and Planning Committee, which is the faculty and staff committee that oversees the Rowan University budgets. So let's say $500 million a year budget. We're not running the university in any way, but we're looking over the entire budgets with the medical schools to try to see how the administration things are impacting the faculty and impacting the running of the schools, and ways that we can help the administration be more effective in their decisions.
What life or work experiences do you have that would make you a good school board member?
So I think I've answered that right there. I can say that, I think it was two years ago now, I was on the advisory committee. There was an advisory committee for the redistricting of the elementary schools, and I was active with that. I've also, within the past year, sort of taken up sending emails to Patrick MacLare, and he's always been very receptive and given nice responses, just sort of letting my opinions be known, and I hope he appreciates that.
Are you aware of the extensive time commitments involved in serving on the Board of Education, including outside of attending a board meetings, and are you willing to meet these commitments?
Yes, I am aware of the time commitments, and I believe I can meet them.
Are you familiar with the School Board Code of Ethics, and how do you intend to ensure that you follow them at all times while serving as a board member?
I am vaguely familiar with the School Board Code of Ethics and certainly would read it up in greater detail. Again, my thought is that the school board is meant to be guiding the administration and is not meant to be micromanaging little, every little decision. So I think that helps in actually not trying to get involved in places where you shouldn't be getting involved.
What issues do you foresee as the most important for the board over the next year?
So I've somewhat answered this, but I'll repeat my answer. I think the budgetary issues the district faces are huge, because if they're, they probably do have to be answered with cuts, but what those cuts do and how they impact the students is real, the declining enrollment, but also this pandemic. At some point, hopefully, people will be returning from the pandemic, hopefully this fall. That's completely beyond all of our control. And they've lost a lot, the students, and they're only young ones. And so if they're in high school, they're going to be graduating and going out to the world, and the district has to provide for them as much as they can when they go out there, wherever they go.
If you are chosen by the board, you will be appointed to a vacated board position that expires at the end of 2021. Would you be interested in running for an elected seat on the board at that time?
I would be interested, I can't guarantee how I would do it. I would certainly have to see how it went in the spring. So if I felt I was ineffective, then I would not be interested in doing it. But if I felt that during the next few months I was being effective, then yes, I would be.
Is there any other information you would like to share with us about your candidacy?
I think I've shared everything I'd like to say.
All right, thank you very much. I think you have a good free to sit around. Sure, so Jennifer Martin was first, and Christopher Simons is the second.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good.
Our next two candidates, remember.
Okay, no problem. Um, there's, yes, you will be. The next two aren't here, but then the one after is. If you don't mind, Rob.
Rebecca.
How do you sit up there, though? Okay, next candidate is Rebecca Higby-Iona, good evening. For purposes of confirming your eligibility to serve on the Board of Education, we must ask you the following questions. Are you a citizen of the United States and have you been a resident of the district for at least one year preceding this appointment?
Yes.
Are you able to read and write?
Yes.
Have you, are you registered to vote in the district?
Yes, I am.
Have you ever been convicted of any crime which may disqualify you from serving as a member of the board?
No, I have not.
Do you currently hold any elected positions?
No, I do not.
Okay. Now, let's move on to the substantive questions. Why do you want to be a member of the Board of Education?
Well, I am a parent of two children who attend district schools, are both in law school right now. I'm a graduate of Pittman Schools, as is my mother, as was my grandmother and my great-grandmother. I own a business in Pittman. I've chosen to make my home here. So I decided, when I heard about this opening, that I have a lot of, I've had a lot of thoughts over the last couple of years about as the district is going through a lot of changes, and I just decided it was time to stop chatting with other parents and actually invest some of my time in, you know, hopefully helping safeguard the future of the district and the education of our children.
What do you think is the role of a school board member?
I think it's to make the best decisions to further the education of the children in the district, while also, you know, bearing in mind that the district is funded with public money, so you need to be careful how you spend that money, but you also have the primary goal of educating children.
What personal qualities do you possess that you feel will make you an effective school board member?
Well, I'm a thoughtful person, I research things before I make decisions. I'm not rational, impulsive, I don't get dug in with my opinions. And I think my professional experience, while I'm not an education lawyer, I am an attorney by profession, and I think a lot of the skills from that profession transfer into making good decisions and taking advice and counsel and applying that to problems that, you know, the board encounters and is charged with resolving.
What life or work experiences do you have that would make you a good school board member?
Well, my profession is as an advocate, so I know how to, like I said, research and issue, form a position, argue in favor of that position. I've also represented teachers and administrators in other school districts on various matters, administrative and civil. I have an understanding of collective bargaining contracts and, you know, I'm not, like I said, I'm not an education attorney, but I do know, I have some experience in that world.
Are you aware of the extensive time commitments involved in serving on the Board of Education, including outside of attending the board meetings, and are you willing to meet these commitments?
Yes, I am.
Are you familiar with the School Board Code of Ethics, and how do you intend to ensure that you follow them at all times while serving as a board member?
I'm familiar with them. I would obviously study them, and if I felt that there was an issue that I needed counsel, then I would seek counsel to ensure that I'm doing the ethical thing, following the rules.
What issues do you foresee as the most important for the board over the next year?
How safely reopen the schools.
If you are chosen by the board, you will be appointed to a vacated board position that expires at the end of 2021. Would you be interested in running for an elected seat on the board at that time?
Yes, I believe so.
Is there any other information you would like to share with us about your candidacy?
Just that I am committed to the future success of this district. I know, you know, as I said in the letter I submitted, I know the district faces a lot of challenges, obviously new ones this last year with COVID, but long-term, the viability of our schools, and I'm committed to helping ensure that as a member of the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kenneth Wilson, this is Robert. Thanks for coming in early, we're running ahead of schedule, so we figured.
Not a problem.
All right, Kenneth Wilson, good evening.
How you doing? Good evening.
For purposes of confirming your eligibility to serve on the Board of Education, we must ask you the following questions. Are you a citizen of the United States and have you been a resident of the district for at least one year preceding this appointment?
Yes, I have.
Are you able to read and write?
Yes.
Are you registered to vote in the district?
Yes.
Have you ever been convicted of any crime which may disqualify you from serving as a member of the board?
No, I have not.
Do you currently hold any elected positions?
No, I do not.
All right, so meet the minimum requirements, let's move on to the substantive questions. Okay, why do you want to be a member of the Board of Education?
I've always been involved with education, I was a facilities manager for 27 years, and I always thought that it would be very interesting to, once I retire, to get on the board to help with everyday operations.
What do you think is the role of a school board member?
The role is to work as a team and to oversee operating. Role is to work as a team and to oversee operations and, you know, put into place what is best for everyone involved.
What personal qualities do you possess that you feel will make you an effective school board member?
I have great communication skills. I work well with others. As I mentioned, I have, you know, quite a bit of experience in education, even though I wasn't facilities manager, I was involved in a lot of other responsibilities with moving and different things with that nature, building and just, just all around.
What life or work experiences do you have that will make you a good school board member?
Certified Facilities Manager, kind of a lot of classes in communication, management, business classes, and I also possess my New Jersey State Winters License as well.
You show this last one?
My Winters, New Jersey State Laxile License.
Are you aware of the extensive time commitments involved in serving on the Board of Education, including outside of attending board meetings? And are you willing to meet these commitments?
Absolutely.
Are you familiar with the school board code of ethics? And how do you intend to ensure that you follow them at all times while serving as a board member?
I'm not fully aware of all the ethics, but I know that they offer a lot of courses for board members for certification, and I'd be willing to, you know, take them as soon as possible.
What issues do you foresee as the most important for the board over the next year?
Over the next year, I would say dealing with the COVID situation that we're in right now, and also the readjustments of the various buildings that would be worked out best for the district.
If you are chosen by the board, you will be appointed to a vacated board position that expires at the end of 2021. Would you be interested in running for an elected seat on the board at that time?
Yes, I would.
Is there any other information you would like to share with us about your candidacy?
Just that I hope that I am considered. I'm really looking forward to being part of the community and helping out whichever way I can.
All right, thank you very much. Feel free to stick around if you'd like. Catherine Murphy is the senior. Thank you again for joining us. All right, Catherine Murphy, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Good. I'll be asking you some questions. For purposes of confirming your eligibility to serve on the Board of Education, we must ask the following questions. Are you a citizen of the United States and have you been a resident of the district for at least one year preceding this appointment?
Yes.
Are you able to read and write?
Yes.
Are you registered to vote in the district?
Yes.
Have you ever been convicted of any crime which may disqualify you from serving as a member of the board?
No.
Do you currently hold any elected positions?
No.
Okay. There were questions, don't worry. All right, why do you want to be a member of the Board of Education?
I recently started moderating online Zoom classes for an artist, and I really kind of enjoyed the educational aspect to it. There's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, I guess that I wasn't really aware of. I mean, I have three kids, but I was always so busy with them, I never got into the school side. But my youngest is going to be in kindergarten starting next year. Hopefully it's back full-time. But I would like to start volunteering and, you know, just giving back to my community and just really seeing what the board kind of does and just be more of an active member.
What do you think is the role of the school board member?
From what I've read online, it looks like that you are responsible for seeing the hires and you are a boundary between the teachers and the students and also the community or the parents. You have an active role in the, the, I lost my words. I can't remember what I was going to say, I'm sorry.
What personal qualities do you possess that you feel will make you an effective school board member?
So my resume, I have a strong medical background. I've been in and out of administration positions. So my strongest asset is I'm really just good at communicating with people on all different levels, all different aspects. I enjoy working with groups of people. I work better in groups. I learn very quickly, very easily, and I enjoy just constantly kind of moving and learning new things and meeting new people, so I feel like it would be a good role for me.
What life or work experiences do you have that will make you a good school board member?
I just kind of touched on it just a little bit. But I do enjoy the new role of being a moderator and working on the educational side, so I would like to kind of dive deeper into that. I think with the pandemic, everyone's really just kind of trying new things that they haven't done before, so it's something that I would like to try.
Are you aware of the extensive time commitments involved in serving on the Board of Education, including outside of attending the board meetings? And are you willing to meet these commitments?
I'm not fully aware of that. I didn't see it written down anywhere.
Not quite, no. Are you familiar with the school board code of ethics? And how do you intend to ensure that you follow them at all times while serving as a board member?
And how can I, I'm sorry, what was that last part?
Are you familiar with the school board code of ethics? And how do you intend to ensure that you follow them at all times while serving as a board member?
I briefly read over them online and just to ensure, it would be really talking with everybody and seeing their experiences and how they kind of upheld that for a period of time, just basically learning from my peers.
What issues do you foresee as the most important for the board over the next year?
The most important issues? I mean, we're in the middle of the pandemic. It's so hard and stressful for everybody right now. So the most important thing over the next year would probably be whether or not we're going to continue in like a virtual learning or transitioning back into the school. That's probably going to be really difficult for everybody, so I'd say that would be at the top of the list.
If you are chosen by the board, you will be appointed to a vacated board position that expires at the end of 2021. Would you be interested in running for an elected seat on the board at that time?
I would be interested, I think, in running at that time.
And finally, is there any other information you would like to share with us about your candidacy?
No, I don't think there's anything else to share, but thank you all for the opportunity to just come here and it's a little strange of everyone, spread out so wide.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you want to have a seat at that.
The last one will be David Mitchell.
David Little, good evening.
Good evening.
I have some questions for you to first to make sure you respond to. For purposes of confirming your eligibility to serve on the Board of Education, we must ask the following questions. Are you a citizen of the United States and have you been a resident of the district for at least one year preceding this appointment?
Yes.
Are you able to read and write?
Yes.
Are you registered to vote in the district?
Yes.
Have you ever been convicted of any crime which may disqualify you from serving as a member of the board?
No.
Do you currently hold any elected positions?
No.
All right, now move on to the substantive questions. Why do you want to be a member of the Board of Education?
It's important for the town, especially for our children to have a voice, you know. They have concerns, you know, being a whole, you know, a part of the community, even especially with our Allo District children needs some representation also, so with me being both in Pittman and Allo District placements, I feel that I have to sum up the knowledge to help.
What do you think is the role of a school board member?
oversee policies and procedures and making sure everything runs smoothly.
What personal qualities do you possess that you feel will make you an effective school board member?
I've been in the field of disabilities for over 20 years. I got my master's in social work recently due to my youngest son. So I got the knowledge of, you know, the realm of special ed really for the past 20 years, so, you know, I bring that expertise to the table.
What life or work experiences do you have that would make you a good school board member?
I've worked for one of the special school districts here in Gloucester County. I worked at various education schools, pre-teen day programs, so a lot of regarding the field of disabilities for the past 20 years.
Are you aware of the extensive time commitments involved in serving on the Board of Education, including outside of the attending of board meetings? And are you willing to meet these commitments?
Yes.
Are you familiar with the school board code of ethics? And how do you intend to ensure that you follow them at all times while serving as a board member?
I have not known the board of ethics code, haven't looked at it, but I would follow the code.
What issues do you foresee as the most important for the board over the next year?
I guess at this point I don't see anything, but you know, with the, I guess Allo District, you know, funding wise for Allo District children or students, I think that's the biggest, probably the biggest concern.
If you are chosen by the board, you will be appointed to a vacated board position that expires at the end of 2021. Would you be interested in running for an elected seat on the board at that time?
Yes.
Is there any other information you would like to share with us about your candidacy?
Yeah, I think I kind of covered it.
All right, thank you very much. You can have a seat at that. Do a public hearing first.
So let's do a public hearing.
You will now have a public hearing. This is public comment and not a dialogue between the board and the public. You will have three minutes to speak, and it's your opportunity to comment or ask questions. There will not be a back and forth exchange between the speaker and the board. At the close of public comments, we will respond as best we can. If we do not have the information available at this time, and if it is something we can share with you, we will get back to you. Anyone have a public comment they would like to make? Any members of the board? At this time, we're going to break for executive session so we can deliberate over the information that we obtained from the interviews.
Well, I think, Mr. Wahara, it's about five to eight, and I think what we should do is maybe check in every 20 minutes with anybody who's waiting outside, just to let them know where we're. I can't imagine it's going to be any shorter than 20 minutes, but because I know we have a lot to get through, and of course, there are six candidates tonight. So we would ask that, you know, motion in a second to go into executive session. We would ask that the members of the public and the interviewees please clear the room. Normally what we would do in the past when we've had board interviews is we go in the back, but I think because of, you know, the pandemic and social distancing, that's kind of rendered impossible. We have to fix where we are. So we would ask that everybody who was present, if you could clear the hallway and of course remain socially distanced while you're outside. There is one point that I forgot to mention at the beginning, Mr. Wahara, if you don't mind. Whoever is chosen, if someone is chosen tonight, and if you weren't here, I know for you, we're not here at that point, it needs a majority of the remaining members of the board in order for there to be an appointment tonight. So there are six board members with Mrs. Knickie's resignation, so you would need four votes, four affirmative votes to be appointed. Before you are appointed, you do have to clear criminal background check. Mrs. Brazelton can provide the successful candidate with the information. If there is not a majority obtained tonight, then the seat is not filled, and by law, after 65 days, the county executive superintendent would then be charged with making the appointment. I'm not saying that's going to happen. I haven't talked to any of you about this. It's purely a matter of board function, and I just want to make sure everyone's aware of the process and what we are attempting to do this evening. So my suggestion is every 20 minutes, we will check in with everybody and I'll go out and update the public on where we stand in deliberations and when we can expect to reconvene to either make a vote or to adjourn at that time.
Can I have a motion to close open and open close?
Show move.
Second? Call in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now out of executive session, we are back in open session. At this point, may I have a motion? Is there a motion from the Curriculum Instruction and Personnel Committee?
I note that the Pittman Board of Education appoints Jennifer Martin as a Pittman Board of Education member, start date pending criminal history background check through December 31st, 2021.
Now you have a second.
I second the motion.
Any discussion? See none, can you pull the board, please?
Miller? Appleardo?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Wilson Doherty?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Wahara?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Motion carries. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming tonight. That is all the business for the school board this evening. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Show move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If there are none, we are adjourned. The next meeting for the school board is Wednesday, February 17th, 2021. It will be by Zoom, and the Zoom invitation will be posted. Jennifer Martin, if you want to stick around for a second, we'd like to talk to you for a little bit. bit. All right, happy to know you, everybody.